Good evening. I will call to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council for a special work session on January 29th at 6:44 PM. And we'll start with our city attorney opening up the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Amanda Gile Hinman, City Attorney. So tonight is a special work session to continue our discussion from our last work session regarding potential term limits, a refinement to our charter language regarding term limits. And specifically, there was two questions that we were grappling with. The first was about carving out additional time for a councillor to serve as mayor when they've already served two terms as councillor. And some of the ideas that we, or some of the reasons for that, that had been communicated to the council by some of the community members who had come in to a council meeting to talk about this issue were, you know, issues with a lack of consistency if we're going to continually have one-term mayors because if a person has served as, on council for two terms, they'd only have, they'd only be eligible for one term as mayor under our charter language. And also just that it takes time as a councillor to sort of learn the ropes of local government and also just our regional and statewide presence, the amount of information that is needed to learn, you know, a four-year term in and of itself may not be sufficient time to really get up to speed. And so, you know, also what was discussed was that the mayor serves a very important role for Wilsonville, not only locally but regionally and statewide. Wilsonville, as we like to say, punches above our weight class in the region and in the state. And so, you know, having a mayor that, or having the opportunity for mayors to serve more than one term is, is, could be important in those regional and statewide meetings and discussions that occur. So tonight, I wanted to, if the mayor so, is so inclined that we would start with going back to the discussion about the mayoral term, excuse me, the mayoral terms. Does that make sense?
Yes. Where we talked, where we had the discussion about the separation, which is, which is the first point that was brought up by the people that came to council in, I think, March, of the mayor term and the council term.
So the two examples that are in, so in your council packet is the staff report from the last work session. And in that, there are two examples, very recent examples, of different ways that the, that other jurisdictions in our area are looking at, or have looked at refining the mayoral and councillor terms. So Tuolumne, which, as the council may recall from the discussion, Tuolumne is, its language was very similar to Wilsonville in that Wilsonville's term limit, charter amendment that occurred back in 2020 was modeled after language that Tuolumne, the Tuolumne community adopted in 2016. And so, Tuolumne's refinement of that was to say, yes, anybody can serve 12 years in a 20-year period, however, if somebody, if somebody serves as councillor for two terms, meaning eight years, they can also serve two terms as mayor, essentially adding another four years to that 12-year period. Tigard was the other example that was given. Tigard fully separates the two and says eight years for, as, anybody can serve eight years as councillor and then eight years as mayor. So they're completely separate. So the discussion where we left off last time was really looking at, and I don't think there was really consensus one way or the other about whether council was interested in looking at fully separating the two positions or doing what Tuolumne did. And if it's helpful, I can start with sharing Tuolumne's code language, or, excuse me, charter language from that time, again, they have sent, from their refinement that they did back in 2022. So the underlined part is the part that they added. So again, this language, other than that underlined part, is, is Wilson, is the same language that Wilsonville has in its charter. So again, it's any person, no person shall serve more than 12 years in any 20-year period, except if a person has served only two terms as city councillor, then that person shall be eligible to serve another two consecutive terms as mayor. So I think this, unless there's specific questions, I think this would be a good point for council to talk through, if you have had any further thoughts on the issue since our last work session.
Thank you. I think councillor Linville, is that your number?
I think one thing that would be, I think one thing that would be helpful to begin would be to look at these two examples and compare them and contrast them to the terms that we currently have. And my understanding, if I, if I look at this right, is that the city of Tuolumne has the same number of years and terms that we currently have. Is that correct?
Outside of the amendment they did, yes.
They have three, four-year terms out of a 20-year period.
Correct.
And their amendment allowed, if a councillor has served only two terms, but I assume less than, could it be less than two terms?
Well, so if they only serve one term, they'd only be able to serve two terms as mayor. That would be the 12 years. If they only serve one term as councillor, they could only serve then two terms as mayor.
So their language, by not totally separating the two positions, still requires time served as a city councillor to count toward the mayoral term limits.
Yes, that is correct. Yep.
And if I understand correctly, that went to the voters and, and passed.
Yes.
So their voters said, yes, with this exception, there can be an extension of the terms under these, under this, this condition.
Correct.
And the Tuolumne, or the Tigard is different in that they only allow two consecutive terms of four years, not three. So not 12 years, they only allow eight years. Is that correct?
That's correct. And I, and I do want to just point out, Tigard's is proposed, Tigard's is, has not been adopted yet, but yes, that, you're correct.
But they're, but they are different in that they are not looking at a 12-year limit within 20 years, they are looking at eight years period.
Yeah, so the way their language, and I can, would it be helpful if I pulled it up, pulled up their proposed language?
Yeah, yeah.
Let me do that.
And the only reason I'm, I'm trying to clarify that is that they are saying that they are completely trying to separate any time served as a councillor from being applicable to the two terms allowed as a mayor.
Right. So what they say is, a mayor may not be elected or appointed for more than two consecutive terms, and a councillor may not be elected or appointed for more than two consecutive terms, for a total of more than four, no more than four consecutive terms on council. So the only link is to say, it's not like you can just flip back and forth without some break. You have to have some break if you do two years as a councillor and two years as a mayor, but otherwise, they're completely separate, unlike Tuolumne where there is still a link to the service as a councillor.
Right, right. Oh, I just wanted to kind of clarify that because it, they, it isn't like we're looking at apples and apples. We're looking at something that's a little bit different.
Yep.
And Tuolumne, or Tigard's has not been approved yet by their voters. I think at the last, the last time we had a discussion of this at our last council meeting, I advocated, I was advocating for something that was similar to Tigard's, where it was two terms and two terms. And I would like to retract that because I've had further opportunity to think about this matter. I still think it is appropriate in some way if we, I still believe that the mayor position is very different and distinct from the councillor position, both in the amount of time that is, that, that those positions require, and that in the city of Wilsonville, they are voted upon separately. So our citizens vote for a mayor and they vote for a city councillor. The mayor may not be thinking that they are voting for a mayor who has already served some time doing something else. So, and that would not necessarily be disclosed at the time of the election. They would be, being elected as mayor, but our citizens would have to know they're not being elected for a four-year, a full, you know, more than one or two, or three, four-year terms. So, so we have, we already have a term, a four-year term, either for councillors or for mayors. So I'm, I'm still advocating, if there is some way for us to separate those clearly for our citizens, that, that would be, that would be my preference, to separate those two positions. I would venture to say that a person serving as city councillor for two terms and then would have two terms as a mayor, still puts our city in jeopardy in that that person is not, they become, they become, within the community of the leadership in our area, they become a new person, a new mayor, within the context of all of the other mayors, and they become, and for one term, and then they become a lame duck. So, so that's my bias at this point.
I have a question. So on the Tigard one, they're, they're saying two consecutive terms as a councillor and two consecutive terms as a mayor. And then the two-year break, does that mean then you could take a two-year break and then do it again?
Right. So just like we have some of our positions run in, you know, 2020, 2024, 2028, and then we have others that run in 2022, 2026, and so on and so forth, is that, if somebody ended in 2028, they could run in 2030 again? So they wouldn't have, for Tigard, if this was adopted, that's what they would be able to do. They wouldn't have that eight-year break that exists currently in our charter. So, so, and councillor Linville, if I can go back, just so I make sure I'm clear on what you're saying, are you, are, so your goal, or what your preference is would be to fully separate the council positions and the mayor positions, and are you suggesting that they each be three terms?
I am not opposed to the term limits. I think 12 years within a 20-year period for either one of those two positions is appropriate. I think the term limit, I'm fine with term limits. What I am struggling with is taking years of experience as a councillor and applying it to a different position and limiting what currently exists as a term limit. We currently have right now, within the mayor position, 12 years within a 20-year period. That currently exists.
Mm-hmm.
And our voters voted on that, and they approved that. So I am not, I'm not asking for that to be changed. All I'm saying is that they approved 12 years, they approved 12 years and, and put all of these things together. And so...
You're just making a distinction between the position of councillor versus the position of mayor, treating them separately, limiting each position to 12 years within a 20-year period.
Exactly.
And so if a mayor, if a councillor serves 12 years and then serves 12 years as mayor, are they, under your scenario, they would, in a 20-year period, only have served 12 years as councillor and could immediately run for council again?
If they only served one term, is that what you're saying?
So if they served 12 years as councillor, and then they ran for mayor and served 12 years as mayor, in a 20-year period, you only have to sit out for eight years. So they'd be immediately able to run for council again. So I, as, as a councillor, not as a mayor. And so what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, is, it sounds like with term limits, the goal was to have some kind of break. And so the question is, is what does that break look like if you're fully separating them? How does that get quantified? That's what we would need. And, and so that's what Tigard's doing here with the two years, that's exactly what they're do, what they're doing, is they're saying, out of all the consecutive terms, you, you can have consecutive terms between the two positions, that's fine, but then at the end of that, you need to have, at a minimum, a two-year break.
Right. We don't have consecutive terms in our current charter.
Right. It's just 12 years in the 20-year period, right?
Right.
So you'd be looking more at the language of Tigard?
Tuolumne, Tuolumne?
You'd be, under the scenario you're talking about, it'd be more online.
You would have to have something like Tigard's language, because Tuolumne's is different, it's more akin to, identical to what we have now.
Right. What I'm hearing you say, and, and it could be different, you know, they only allow, only require a two-year break, but basically, what I'm hearing you say is, if you took how you would tweak Tigard's language, is to say, a mayor may not be elected or appointed to more than three consecutive, or 12 years in a 20-year period, and a councillor may not be elected or appointed to more than 12 years in a 20-year period, for a total of no more than 24 years, and then you would say, terms are considered consecu, well, okay, basically that you would then need to build in a break, that after 24 years, there's an eight-year break or whatever.
The likelihood of somebody serving 24 years as a local elected official would be remarkable, and then want to come back after 24 years of night meetings.
Because, and the thing is, that they're being elected. It's not like you can do four years and then just say, oh, I think I'll continue and do four more years. You have to be elected.
Right.
And that is kind of the term limit, right?
And, yes, but, and what I, I just, because I want to make sure that you, you all would be clear of the process, because this is generally different than what, the way our current charter is structured, probably the best way to do it would be a full repeal and replace. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be refining the language.
So, so what would, what would be, what would be the outcome if we would just remove the 20 years? And we just said that city councillors cannot serve any more than 12 years, period. And a mayor may not serve any more than 12 years, period. And separate them, and they can't go back.
That would, that would be the outcome, is that they would, yeah, the outcome would be they can't come back.
I am thinking there is a mayor of Wes Lynn, who is very young, and he might do his career.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Come back 40 years later, and people would want to elect him, but... Well, yeah, if, if we remove the 20 years.
Right.
Then it sets the limit. You can't do any more than 12 years, period.
In a 20-year period.
No, period.
That's what, she's saying, once they serve their 12 years, they're done.
In your lifetime. So you could only do 12 as a councillor, but you'd still be eligible to do 12 as a mayor, but you can't go back, you can't do anything more than that. It removes the 20-year period.
But is that shooting the city in the foot?
No.
That you have somebody that, you know, is really contributing, and now you're saying just 12 years? Why shouldn't they be re-elected and be able to continue?
We, that's what it is right now. It's 12 years.
Well, I think that the reason for that is what the voters passed does have a limit. You know, when you said, why can't they just be re-elected, that, that would be, probably if you didn't have term limits.
Yeah.
Which we had before.
Mm-hmm. But if you do 12 and 12, it's, without 20 years, it's, that limits it.
I would say there is merit to this two-year break that Tigard has, or some kind of five-year break or something. You know, if they did, I mean, maybe two years is a reasonable number because of the staggered terms, or, you know, some, some kind of break, because I understand, we're, what we started with was a term limit format. And the problem that we've identified, maybe we just want to go back to that, that people have spoken to, to us about, and, and that is that the current wording really leaves us with one-term mayors a lot. So this is a discussion of, you know, 12 years, but we really are in a one-term mayor often in this current scenario. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, those options that you have in your handout here, Amanda?
The options on the years of service?
That's all we have, we don't have, we don't have...
Well, you've got, within, now we come to years of service, but in your example, you give an example, because I think one, or, you know, what was our problem statement? It was that we often have one-term mayors, by the way it's currently worded.
Right.
But those options have to do with the other issue.
Partially.
Yes, I can pull it up.
But I understand, I don't want to fracture or fragment the conversation. Do you have any comments before we move to that, councillor President Ogravall?
Well, I guess, I guess from my perspective, the Tuolumne, we have Tuolumne's language verbatim. And they identified this adjustment was needed. So, and in fact, I believe they've already also written up some text and things like that, that could be a resource for us. So, you know, I see, I see the value of, of being able to use that. If we have exactly the same language in our charter that Tuolumne has had, and they have found that it needs to be changed, then it feels like we could move along in that same vein. But, you know, and, and that's what draws me to the Tuolumne one. It seems like a straight line.
I agree that...
I'm okay with that, too.
Pardon?
I'm okay with that, too.
The Tuolumne solution is, is a very, it starts where we are right now, and so it honors that. It does allow for two-term mayors. And why is that important? We, as they probably found, they, and Wilsonville would be, I think, the only city in the region that would often have one-term mayors. And in the arguments in favor, in that voter's pamphlet, it identifies some of those, you know, why that's important to a city. And, you know, some things are, that it does, the adjustment does honor, that they have, honors the spirit of those existing term limits. It is more consistent with other cities, so that you're, whereas many cities don't have any term limits at all. In fact, Clackamas County Commissioners, who are paid a full-time living wage and are on pirs, have no term limits.
Right.
They have no term limits at all, the five Clackamas County Commissioners. Many cities don't have any, any term limits. Our voters, and Tuolumne's voters, however, decided it was a good idea when, when this was proposed in Wilsonville, having heard what Tuolumne had expressed. I will say that I expressed concern about Wilsonville ending up with one-term mayors. And so, so this, I agree that the Tuolumne adjustment really honors the spirit of the term limits, but it gives us a little more even representation in our region. And I want to add something and ask the city, city attorney to validate this, my observation, and things people have said to me, on some of the awkwardness or ambiguity of the wording that we have right now. Now, and so I'll just describe my, my scenario, my experience, and councillor Linville has a little different one. But it's really not uncommon to have, if you look back over the decades, it's very common for city councillors to have something happen in their life where they need to resign. It could be, if, it has been, examples are, someone's spouse has died. We have had that happen in Wilsonville in recent years, in the last 10 years. They get a different job, they, they need to move, they, they have children and families that do not support the time required to be an active city councillor, so that person then resigns for the various reasons. Their position is open, and our charter tells us what to do. So, and we have found that the current wording is, is unclear in some of this, but I just want to describe my situation, which is just one person. I ran in 2012, there were two city council positions open at the time, there were four people running, and the way our charter is, the top vote-getters are elected. It so happened that I received the top number of votes. And one of the positions that were open was that one that had been open for several months. And so the council appointed me to serve, I think it was about seven weeks at the end of 2012, because that position had been open for a long time. And then, but the term I was elected to, just, it began in January. So I was elected to serve a four-year term, I served that term, I chose not to run again in 2017 because I had a lot of out-of-state travel, it was just very time-consuming to, to do the travel that I was seeing ahead, and so I did not run for reelection. But if you look at the way it is worded today in our new term limits, the ones that Tuolumne had already adjusted, those six or seven weeks that I served in the appointment, when they asked to appoint me, I was happy to serve, and that was the beginning of a learning curve, that actually could be considered four years. So those seven weeks can now be considered four years by one reading of the explanatory language in the voter's pamphlet, but I would like to ask the city attorney to comment on, I'm not an attorney, but it, it does not seem as clear as it could be. I did not expect to run again, that was a great learning experience, I spent a lot of time and learned a lot and really enjoyed it. Four years later, the term limits passed, and our mayor position was open, and I think two other councillor positions were open. And after talking to my family and so forth, I decided I would run. And so I was elected, and it's been a real honor to serve, it's a very big-time commitment, so I, that was, you know, a four-year break, and then being elected, and I'm now in that third year of that. And I don't believe that I could run again. And so that's, I've got lots of other things to do, I've loved doing this, but it's very time-consuming. But that would mean that, that we, we would have a person starting out in 21, 2021, getting to know the other mayors, getting to know state legislators, going to the state legislator, getting to know the county commissioners, getting to know the metro councillors, advocating for Wilsonville, all of these things, and certainly getting to know people in our community, listening to them, and so forth. If we have that pattern happen a lot in the next few decades, I think you're going to see a different scenario for Wilsonville in the next few years. Because like other cities that have more workable term limits, or other cities that don't have term limits... or other cities that don't have term limits, in the past, we were able to develop and maintain those relationships more. So, you know, whether or not, you know, if given the opportunity to run, if it was a possibility, it would be an honor for me to be on the ballot, but it would be the voter's decision who they want for mayor. It certainly wouldn't be my decision. And then five, 10 years from now, you've got somebody else in the same situation. So every time somebody leaves office early, really you've got two people affected by the partial terms. So anyway, do you have any clarification? Did I understand that?
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure I'm able to provide clarification, but because of the confusing nature of the language of the charter. So the charter talks about years of service being every 365.25 days worked in that position. And what's problematic is, and I can bring it up, and we discussed this last time, is we have explanatory statement language that indicates that any single day, if you work a single day, that now has triggered a year of service. And, so let me just pull that up here real quick. So, taking, you know, the approach, the approach that we would take as, oops, excuse me. Sorry, you don't need to see my file folder. Taking the approach that, the most conservative approach would be to say, you're ineligible to run, because the explanatory statement that accompanied the ballot measure says that any partial term counts as a year of service, at least a year of service. So let me share this screen. So what the explanatory statement that's accompanying the ballot measure is, it says, "The measure would also apply to a person appointed to complete a term in office." So that's what the mayor's talking about when there's vacancies. "For example, a person appointed to serve any portion of, any portion of a four-year term caused by a vacancy would be eligible to serve two additional four-year terms, because running a third term would exceed the 12-year limit." So, I also, after our last work session, I reached out to Tualitons' city manager, not only to talk about this discussion point, but some of the other ones that we discussed at the last meeting. And she also agreed, although, you know, confirmed, she's not a lawyer, so, but that her interpretation was, a single day served in an appointed position would mean that you are essentially eliminated from running a third term.
So it equates to four years?
Yes, exactly.
So what is then the purpose of having the explanation that 365.25 days shall constitute a year? What is the purpose of that language in the charter and in the ballot measure?
So I think the reason for it is to say, if somebody were to serve, and be one of the off-cycle councillors, that, take out vacancies. If you're one of the councillors who runs from, you're in a position that runs opposite of when the mayor runs, is that if you have served two terms in your position as councillor, you will only be able to serve one term as mayor, because you've essentially served eight years there. So you'll either have to resign two years in and run at the time that, for the mayor position, or you're going to wait two years after you've served as councillor to be able to run for mayor again. And honestly, this question of the vacancy, if this explanatory statement language didn't exist, I'd still say, I'd still be asking the question, what does this mean? Like, what does it mean when you've served, if you've served 200 days versus 400 days? You know, so on and so forth, where you're in between years, does that matter? But with this explanatory statement language that accompanies the ballot measure, you know, I think if this got challenged in court, a court would look at that and say, this is what, this is explaining to the voters what they're voting for. So, at a minimum, what you need to do, if it's confusing, like I think it is, is you either go with the most conservative approach, which is to follow what the explanatory statement says, or you amend the charter to clarify what it, or to get clarification from the voters of what their intent was. I mean, because if you do, we are talking about the second discussion item is how to treat these partial terms caused by vacancies. You know, if the voters, if the council decides to put forward a ballot measure, and it gets voted down, then the message from the voters are clear. A single day in an appointed position does mean they want that to count as a full term, a full four-year term. Or else they weren't properly educated on what it means.
So, in the Tualitan language, as well as their summary under their resolution under the ballot measure?
You're talking about their most recent one, or the one they did in 2016?
Their most recent one, where they made the change. They talk about consecutive terms. And, and I want to just clarify what that means, because your example that you brought up, I'm just trying to think about, let's say we have a councillor who aspires to run for, to be a mayor. And I want to clarify, just in my, in my discussion here tonight, I'm trying to think about what's in the best interest of the city. So, in the long term, doesn't have anything to do with any individual. So, let's say we have a councillor who has aspirations to run for mayor, but they're off-cycle. So, they know they can, and this measure, this exception, like Tualitons gets on our ballot, gets passed, and it does say consecutive. Does that mean that person would have to resign after the two years, and then, and to be eligible to serve two more terms as a mayor and get in the mayor election cycle?
Right.
They would have to serve their two and resign?
So I would say no. And the reason I would say no is because the use of the word consecutive is only in relation to the two terms for mayor. So when they talk about, they say, if a person has served only two terms as a city councillor. So to me, and it says, "Then that person shall be eligible to serve another two consecutive terms as mayor." So to me, what that says is, in my example, they could either do their first four-year term, serve two years, resign and run for mayor and serve two terms as mayor, or they could, or they could serve two terms, two full terms, take two years off, run for mayor, and serve two consecutive terms as mayor.
Okay, all right. So the two-consecutive-term issue would not be in, it doesn't have to be two terms as city councillor and then another two consecutive terms as mayor. I mean, that's what it says, but it's, but it doesn't have to tie those two together. There can be a break.
Right. So to me, the limitation of how it's using consecutive is, let's say you serve two terms as councillor, you take a two-year break, you run for mayor, and you win. So, okay, so there's 12 years, but then you decide not to run for mayor the next time up, but then you want to run again. That's where I think you're going to get into issues, is if there's a break between the mayoral terms.
Okay.
Yeah, is that you'd have to wait a full eight years. If you decided not to run that second term as mayor, you couldn't run the next time it came up. You'd have to wait.
Which I think is what is the spirit of the original term limits, is to not have it go on for so long.
My only concern is, as I look at this kind of rolling down the years, is we end up with more opportunity for people to have served in partial terms as councillors. So, we have a person that runs for two terms and then decides not to run again. And then, are they off, they're off-cycle at that point?
Are you saying if they resign?
Correct, no, they have to run. They have to run every, every four years. So there's not a problem with that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and again, the summary for Tualitons, the refinement of the charter on term limits does, again, say, they just talk about who previously served as two terms, then could serve two executive terms as mayor, so for a total of 16 years in a 20-year period. But it doesn't mean that you can't, you can have that two-year gap if you're one of the off-cycle councillors.
Sure. And what I like about this, and again, I'm going to just reference some of the arguments in favor that were written, and the one that says, "This adjustment honors the spirit of what they started with." And it says, you know, where you say, and this, I don't know how often that's going to happen. You do have a lot of, you know, reasons people aren't willing or able, or they're not elected or whatever, to serve for that many years. And it does say, "In all other circumstance, the 12-year term limit in a 20-year period applies."
Right. And I will note, in talking with Tualitan city manager, and as the voter's pamphlet indicates, that's, the reason that this came up for Tualitan is exactly the same reason you all are debating this now, is this issue of, we're going to have a, we have the potential of cycles of just one-term mayors. It's kind of like the pendulum swung too far the other way. Like, you know, this concern about people being able to be in office for periods of time that felt uncomfortable. Now it's to the other extreme of having one-term mayors. And so it was sort of like riding the ship, really.
Well, this is a work session, and so we're not voting. And we are, just to confirm that, we are hearing everyone's comments, and we'd like to hear more, so that we can give our city attorney direction.
I still have questions.
Yeah.
So, Tualitan, the only change is saying we're separating two consecutive terms for councillor and two consecutive terms for mayor?
Two, two terms for councillor, not necessarily, but then, and then, yes, two consecutive terms for mayor.
Okay.
They did not, if I'm anticipating your question, they did not address the issue of vacancies.
Of what?
Vacancies.
I just think Tigard is a little more simple and clear.
I think it's also, in part of this discussion, is for council to think about, so like, with Tigard's approach, as I mentioned, because it treats this differently as talking about terms versus years, where Tualitan's kind of a hybrid of the two, talking about years and terms, is that if really the desire is to move more towards what Tigard is doing, that's really, in my mind, just the way that you do ballot measures, it's probably not like an amendment. It's not just like crossing out and adding in words. It's probably repealing the language that's in there. It just, to be clean, it'd be repealing the language that's in there and putting in, offering to put in new language.
Did I kind of hear you say that you think that Tigard's is a little more clean? Like, easier to understand from the public?
Oh, I think Tigard's is much more clean.
Because that's how I feel.
It's much more clean. I guess what I, I guess what I'm saying is, it's, I would like to hear, or I think it's important for council to discuss, that difference between modifying language that exists and replacing the language that exists.
Yeah, Tualitan's more of a tweak, and I would say that Tigard's is a charter change. It's a wholesale departure from...
Right.
Yeah. And Tigard is doing it as part of a, assuming, yeah, assuming that they move forward with the proposal, it is to replace their entire charter. So it's a portion of redoing their entire charter. And the reason they did that, or they're proposing to do that, is because they had a charter task force that reviewed their whole charter and identified several things that they believed warranted doing a full replacement of their entire charter.
So if Wilsonville were to move ahead, like with what Tigard did, but we would only be replacing a portion of our charter, is that more difficult than doing an amendment like what Tualitons doing?
It's the exact same process. It's more about educating the public about what you're doing.
Because it just seems, to me, it just seems, if I was from the public point of view, it seems easier to understand and to know what I'd be voting on.
It's just a much lengthier process, because you would have to set up a charter review committee to make a recommendation to council, and that would take some time.
So would we be able to do that for the May election, or not?
No.
Got it.
I don't, I haven't seen it for a while, but I believe Tigard had not updated their charter for quite a few years.
Right, it's, yes.
And Beaverton went through a similar process, when they went from strong mayor to council manager.
And generally speaking, I mean, I don't know what Tigard's experience will be, but generally speaking, when you do full charter replacements, it opens up the potential for more, for people to challenge what you're doing. Yeah, so I think I would say, to Brian's point, is that if it's looking at kind of a more holistic change, it probably warrants forming a task force.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation, that you do form a committee. And it's something that a future council could entertain as well.
It probably wouldn't be able to, so if we weren't meeting a deadline for this May election, then for the November election, too, we wouldn't have made any changes.
Charter review committees generally take about a year, if you want to have a meaningful public involvement process.
Got it, thank you.
Oh, sure, this is...
I think that's, that's good information to have. You know, it's kind of, oops. You inherit what you inherit, right? And so we're, we're in that position now, looking at the, what we have, and what Tualitan has done for their adjustment. They inherited that, that's the adjustment they made. And it could be, some years from now in the future, another group of people will be saying, "Well, you inherit what you inherit." Right? And then, and maybe they would decide to do a charter review and a committee, and do that whole process. And these things evolve over time as happens, right? Because life continues and change happens, and we all grow, and needs are, you know, constantly evolving, and, you know, all of these things. Different information comes to light, and I think that's natural. I think that's healthy and good. Like, usually things that are stagnant, stagnant, they die, right? So, so change is, it's important. It's showing that there is life happening. But it seems to me like the Tualitan one, we're really, we're having small tweaks. It's not, it's not a big turn from what, from what is in place. And why, while I will agree, like the Tigard's, it seems pretty crisp. Like, that language is crisp, it's easily readable and stuff, you know? But what we have inherited is very similar to what Tualitan has. In fact, it's verbatim to what Tualitan has.
So if I can go back to my initial statements, I think Councilor Ockervall makes a really good point. And I think the exception, as it's written in Tualitan's charter, takes care of the problem of the one-term mayor getting, I think that eliminates that issue. I'm still concerned that two-term mayors are not, not as good as what we currently have. But it still does allow for a three-term mayor that doesn't have any previous council experience. So I'm supporting this language, although I know we're not voting at this point. I think it is a, it's probably the simplest fix for us.
Just one clarification to what you said, for the record, I think...
Two-term mayor.
Well, you said it's different from what we currently have, but you might have meant what we previously had.
We currently have, in our language, the mayor may serve three, four-year terms in a 20-year period.
Okay, that's what you're referring to.
That's what I meant.
Yes.
I mean, irrespective, I mean, right now, I mean, eliminating any other previous.
I see what you mean, okay. It does split the difference, because you could have that happen. You could also have, continue with, you know, we need four councillors pretty often to serve four-year terms. So we do have the, you know, some continuity there, all the number of people. Yes, I see what you mean. Thanks.
Do we want to move on? I feel like I have a pretty good sense that, bringing back some language... I feel like I have a pretty good sense that, bringing back some language.
Okay.
Okay, do we want, let's move on to talking about the vacancy issue. So, I provided council a document of some, this was my attempt at providing some language about the vacancy issue to help start the discussion, and to give some examples of how that would play out, so, but, you know, this is council's prerogative to either do either of these, neither of these, something different. So, the first option, so the two things that I really heard from council from our last work session was this talk about when there's a vacancy and somebody's filling it for less than a year, and then when, just vacancies in general for partial terms. So, that first, that first option is for the less than one year, where I added language that if a person filled a vacancy of another person's term for a period of less than 365.25 days, that's the one-year calculation in the charter, the days attributable to filling the vacancy are not counted towards years of service. So, essentially, that would eliminate it going towards a term. So, once though, under that option one, once somebody hits 365.25 days in an appointment, then they, that then would be a term, count the equivalent of a four-year term. So, they'd only be able to serve, run twice more. So, the two examples I gave was, a counselor vacates the position with six months left in a term, a person is appointed, and then they are elected, they're appointed to fill that term, and then they run for the position when it comes up for election. They are elected, they would be eligible to run for two additional terms after that election. But if they vacated, if a counselor vacates a position 18 months into that term, anybody who filled that vacancy, if they got elected at the next election, that next November election, that full, filling out that whole term then would count as a full term.
The only thing about your examples is it is, you specify it's counselor, but it could be a counselor or a mayor.
True.
I mean, you're talking about either position.
Either position, right.
Okay.
Yes. You're right.
I just want that to be clear, that it's not just counselors. It's the same if a person is appointed as a mayor for a partial term, it does affect their.
That's right. Yep, it's for both. That's a fair point. But in the second scenario, the other thing that I talked about is, let's say, somebody serves in that position until it comes up for election, of that off-cycle election, under our charter, it has to go to an election, and another person is elected in that, and serves out the remaining two years, that person who got elected, that would count as a term for them. For the person who served for that six-month appointment, it would not count as a term. So, there's kind of the distinction, if you think about it that way. And then the second option basically is that.
Help me understand, before you go to the second one, help me understand how a person would be elected to a partial term?
So, under our charter, if they're, so what our charter says is, if there's a vacancy, let's say you're a counselor, the counselor position is one that gets filled, that gets, is up for election in, I have to think about this, we're in 2024, so in 2026. So, if that person resigns and somebody's appointed, because there is a partial, there's another election for other positions that come up in 2024, our charter says, an election needs to happen to fill the remainder of that position.
At the next biennial election is what it says.
Right.
In the charter.
So, even though 2026 is when it'll be up for its normal election, an election will happen in 2024 for that remaining two years. That's what our charter says. And the reason for that, I mean, that is so, that is pretty standard across all city charters that way, and I think the idea is, is that that's a long period of time, if somebody resigns, you know, pretty early on in their term, that's a long period of time for an appointed person.
You want the voters to vote the person.
Exactly. So, basically, if they can do the election, you do the election.
So, we already have that in our charter.
Yeah.
So, a person could not, let's say, a, let's say a counselor or a mayor gets elected, and within two months after they get, their term starts, something happens and they have to resign. And they've got over three, maybe almost four years left in that term.
Right.
Under our current charter, at the next biennial election, they would have to run. They could not, if they wanted to stay in that position, they could, they would not get appointed for a four-year term.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
So, we already have that in our charter.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so basically, what you're dealing with here is really, I mean, so option one is talking about the issue of when there's, you know, a very short period of time, all things considered, left in a term, that somebody's filling for vacancy. The second option that we talked about was, if there's any partial term due to vacancy. So, in the second option, basically, if you're filling a vacancy regardless of if it's, if you're elected or appointed, if you're filling the vacancy in this option two language, that wouldn't count as years of service. So, it's kind of finding that balance, and I will say, because I'm anticipating, that a question may be, well, can we write language of, for the appointed versus the elected? We could do that. I will say, again, the more confusing you make the language, or the more nuanced you make the language, it's harder for voters to understand what you're actually doing. So.
Well, and I think our voters, our voters wanted to have previous terms count in some way. And so, the question is, what's reasonable?
Right.
Tom? I think that's a good point, and, you know, there's a lot of variation of what can happen over the years, you know, all these timing things and the different types of terms. So, in, again, in the spirit of keeping it close to what was past, I think option one is sufficient. You're still getting some continuity. I think option two could, could make for, it just seems to me it could make for some pretty long, a length of service that is not.
Well, at Tuolotin's, Tuolotin doesn't have this.
No.
So, their partial term appointments don't count.
No, their partial term appointments do count.
Oh, they do count.
Yeah, a single day.
A single day.
And the other thing that I will say is, if you took out the explanatory statement, I'd say this language is actually probably exactly what the current charter means, but because the explanatory statement says what it says, I feel like if you want to clarify what that, what the charter language probably actually does mean, this is the way to do it.
So, do, I understand then, I mean, in your legal opinion, we have our charter language, which has one description, and then we have the explanatory statement language, which may have a slightly different description.
Yeah.
And so, we're looking for a way to flush out that and bring clarity.
Right.
And option one, in your legal opinion, does that bring the necessary clarity?
Exactly. Yes. Yeah, to me, if I didn't have that language and didn't have the explanatory statement, I think it is a good faith, solid argument to say that when you, if you don't hit 365.25 days, it's not a year. I think that's an easy argument to make. But when you have the explanatory statement with it, that's where the confusion comes in. So, I feel like this added language just essentially clarifies.
Okay.
That that, if you're serving less than the 365.25 days, it doesn't count.
Where did the explanatory statement come from?
Tuolotin. It's.
That's why they amended their charter.
Okay.
So, any, I guess, with any other comments on these two options for people's preferences? Heard from you. I'm really okay with option one.
Seeing head nods for option one.
Nelson Berry?
Me too.
And again, you're not making a decision tonight, so you'll have language to look at and have a further discussion on at our next council meeting in February.
Is that a new one?
Yeah.
All right. Well, that is the only item, I think that's our last item, and our work session is now adjourned at 7:44. Thank you.